We have a couple of board members absent this evening, specifically the President and the Vice President. Board policy then puts the responsibility on the clerk to run the meeting, which is me. So I will call this Germantown School Board meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Please stand if you are able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
Thank you. Official meeting notification, Dr. Rutter.
Public notice of all meetings has been given by communication from the Superintendent's Office to the public, to those in media who have requested such notices in the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Northwest Now, Express News, and the West Bend Daily News. Public notice has also been posted in schools throughout the district on the Germantown School District website as well as cable access channel ninety-six.
Thank you. Item B is roll call. Barney is here. Sotterberg?
Here.
Loth?
Here.
Ewert?
Here.
Pollak?
Here.
All right. Item two, approval of agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It carries. All right. Item three, reports. Item A, District Administrator update. Dr. Rutter?
Thank you. Even though February is our shortest month, it's one of the busiest in our school district, I just want to highlight a few things that have happened this past month as we close out February tomorrow. During the week of February sixth through the tenth, it was School Counselor Recognition Week, so I'd like to, on behalf of the, we did some social media posting and some things on our website, but on behalf of the board and administration, I'd like to thank Ms. Rundy, Ms. Freiberger, Ms. Peterson, Ms. Guadellardo, Ms. Whitteman, Ms. Topataz, Mr. Benz, Mrs. Bass, Ms. Mueller, and Ms. Hernandez, our school counselors across the district for the great work they do every day with our kids. And we're very fortunate as a school district to have a school counselor at every one of our elementaries and multiple at our middle and high. So thank you to all of our counselors. Winter sports season is in full force when it comes to the postseason. Girls' basketball played at home on Thursday night. They advanced to regional finals this coming week. Our bowling team is participating in a bowling state tournament. Our boys' basketball team will be playing this week as well. And just this past weekend, the wrestling team went for individual state wrestling, and congratulations to Ethan Riddle, who is Division One State Champ in his weight class. So it's quite an honor. And our entire Germantown wrestling team will go to state this coming weekend. So we have a lot to be proud of when it comes to the winter sports season. There's many things going on. And speaking of winter, we've had a couple of days off, and I just thank the families for being able to be nimble, making that decision to close schools never fun or something we want to do, but we had some positive feedback from families on communications that went out to keep people up to date. So thank you to our families and our teachers for driving, and our all staff driving in on last week, Thursday in the morning, when weather wasn't the greatest, but we were able to have a full day of school with no delays, to my knowledge. And then finally, just wanted to give a shout out to the Germantown Community Scholarship Fund. Their gala was last week. We had a few board members there. We had some of our administrators. They raised an enormous amount of money at their auction, and all of that money goes right back to our kids and scholarships as well as teacher grants. So thank you to them for the great work they're doing. And there's many PTA events that have happened this last week and are going to be happening this week at our elementaries, and all of that money is put right back into our kids. And so thank you to all of our PTA committees as well.
All right. Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board? Bob?
Yeah, I just want to thank Dr. Rutter for all you did on the winter activity we had. It was between a rock and a hard place. I know when I was growing up, I'd walk to school four miles barefoot uphill.
Both ways.
Both ways. But, no, seriously, it's easy to close a school based on all the conditions. It's a lot more difficult to reopen up a school, and I know you did long hours, a lot of heavy lifting, a lot of communication with municipalities, the villages, and the cities that our district is in. So I just want to thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
All right. Item B, Student Representative Report. Do we have Abby tonight? Welcome.
Good evening. There we go. We'll start with Amy Bell. During the month of January, the students at Amy Bell enjoyed playing in the snow during recess, and they hope the weather will continue to allow that to happen. Amy Bell just finished up their Super Bowl challenge, where students and staff were encouraged to bring Kansas soup in to vote for the NFL team they hoped they'd win. They then donated these cans to St. Boniface Food Pantry. This month, Amy Bell will move their character focus to honesty. Teaching the students how to be honest and the importance of telling the truth will help them set up for future success. Down the road at County Line, they are focusing on perseverance this month. We are hoping that the students will learn how to cope and keep going even when things get hard. The kindergartners dressed like hundred-year-olds on the first day, on the hundredth day of school, and the first graders had a fashion show. The PTA hosted a free family bingo night on Friday, February twenty-fourth, which was a big hit. The fifth graders had their music concert coming up next Wednesday, and the Scholastic Book Fair will be happening March sixth through the eighth. They can't wait to see what will happen during the rest of the school year. The month of, or this month, Rockfield's character focus is honesty. One way to think about being honest is being truthful in what you do and say. Practicing honesty helps strengthen our relationships and reduce stress. Honesty is one of the three traits we will focus on throughout the year that helps students be well. Throughout the school, students will develop skills like regulating emotions, positive self-talk, and stress management. Rockfield had to postpone their fitness day because of weather cancellations, so they look forward to that coming up. Over at MacArthur, the fifth graders have successfully completed their DARE program with Officer Olson. Students learned how to respond to peer pressure using resistance strategies. Students practiced the DARE decision-making model throughout their ten-week course. The fifth graders looked forward to learning and discussing on how to make positive choices each week. The students learned the effects of bullying on others and participated in role play to learn how to help their peers if they witnessed bullying. Our students came up with many of their own strategies to stop bullying in their tracks, which was quite impressive. All the students wrote letters to their future self to remind them what they learned in the DARE program. KMS has been really busy. The KMS Battle of the Books just took place. Special congrats to Alana Stephens in seventh grade for winning. Team Alana and another team will combine together this Friday to represent KMS in the state battle. Congrats to the KMS FBLA team, who took third at regionals this past week. The KMS Friends team took second as a team at their last week. And shout out to Ms. Wesley's literacy class. Ms. Wesley, in her seventh-grade literacy class, donated one hundred and fifty children's books to the Nextdoor Early Childhood Facility in Milwaukee for its Book for Kids program. The students and families were asked to donate gently-used books. The book drive began on Martin Luther King's birthday and was an honor in his commitment to service. The student council has been actively planning a teacher's dinner for the staff before March conferences. KMS has so much to get involved in as well. Just this past week, they have had girls volleyball, after-school studies skills, destination imagination, AV club, forensics, yearbook, and student council. The Crusaders have been busy. Even through the crazy weather the past month, this hasn't stopped the activities at GHS. The Palms team finished up their season by performing in a parade at Disneyland this past week. The wrestling team made history by qualifying the whole team for state wrestling meet for the first time ever. KK Arnold was honored with the McDonald's All-American Jersey before Tuesday, February fourteenth home game. She was selected for more than seven hundred and twenty-two nominees across the country to play in the 2023 McDonald's All-American Game in March in Houston, Texas. The current eighth graders attended the freshman orientation night, which included a co-curricular fair to learn about all the GHS co-curricular offerings. The ski team had a great state meet at Mount La Crosse. The GHS Skills USC team completed regionals last Friday. Boys' and girls' basketball are prepping for their post-conference play. The gymnastics team won their conference meet and advanced to state as a team. And last but not least, the boys' hockey team just finished up their season. Great work to all the teams and best of luck to those who are still competing. GHS is excited to see what's in store for the rest of the year. Thank you.
Wow, there's a lot going on in this district. Yeah, thank you. Any comments or questions from the board? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item C of Rockfield Elementary Presentation. Dr. Dana Crowe.
Good evening. Thank you so much for inviting Rockfield here tonight to present to you. We decided this year that it would make the most sense to share some of the incredible writing that our students have done since we've adapted the new Lucy Cochrane's Writer's Workshop curriculum officially for the entire school year this year. What makes this writing pretty incredible is the amount of work that goes into preparing for each and every lesson. Sometimes it's up to twelve pages of reading per lesson for the teachers to prepare, and what you'll listen to tonight will show that our teachers are so committed and dedicated that they do put the time and the effort in because they are committed to our writers as well. So also, the students learn different genres throughout the year, so we picked a few, a few writing pieces that are a little bit more current to them, so they will, they will introduce themselves, state the genre and the title to their writing piece. And now I will turn it over to our third, fourth, and fifth grade writers.
Hi, my name is Myla, and I'm going to reading, and I'm going to read Stop Bullying. The world is filled with bullies, and I want to stop that. We can do this by even just saying, hey, I like your shoes, or even just a smile. If you really want to change the world, then people stop bullying and teasing others constantly. So what I really want and other people want is for bullying to stop. Very soon, I want our school to not have bullies. So if you have a bullying, bullying you constantly, stand up for yourself and say, stop. Please stop bullying me. Hey, bullies out there, have empathy, think how people feel. So please stop bullying, even today or tomorrow. Show some kindness in yourself. Make someone stay and ignore bullies. Bullies, hear this. Treat people how you want them to be treated. Put a smile on your face, brighten up someone's life. No more bullies now, right now.
Hi, my name is Zoe, and I'll be reading an opinion writing about sunsets. Everybody should appreciate sunsets. One reason you should appreciate sunsets is because they calm you down. Picture this, you're laying on, you're laying a blanket down on the break in the grass. You're about to sit down, then you, then you see the beautiful sunset. When you finally sat down, you could hear a pin drop. You feel like fresh air. Slowly, the sunset fades, then you see the night sky. Another reason you should appreciate sunsets is because of their colors. When the red meets the orange and the orange meets the yellow, it's so pretty. Sometimes the clouds turn pink, and it's such a perfect sunset. It really calms me down. Third reason everybody should appreciate sunsets is the surroundings. Here, you're drinking hot cocoa, and you're wearing really comfy PJs with a really soft blanket. Don't forget, it's snowy. The trees are totally white, covered with snow. Then, really far out in the distance, you see the beautiful sunsets. The forests in the summer are even better than the ones in the winter. The trees are bright green. Sometimes there's a really pretty lake below the sunset. To me, that's a perfect sunset. Remember the first part of the story? Okay, maybe you don't, but let me refresh your memory. At the beginning, I said that sunsets make you calm. The fourth reason everybody should appreciate sunsets is because they make you, they make you calm. Every time you look at a sunset, it, it messes with your brain, and it makes you calm. Every time you see a sunset, you can't look away. You're so calm. That was the last reason everybody should appreciate sunsets. Now you know why I think you should appreciate sunsets.
Hi, I'm Omari, Omari, and this is my petition for why we should use less plastic. Have you ever seen an animal die? It's because plastic and trash in the sea. If you go to the beach, you might, might see trash on land or in the sea. But be helpful and help pick up the trash. The first reason is animals try to eat plastic or sometimes get trapped in it. For example, I saw a turtle get trapped in plastic bubble wrap. For another example, birds can get stuck in plastic rings, so if you have them, you should cut them. The second reason is plastic creates lots of trash. For example, when I was at a party, at my birthday party, I accidentally put a party in there. People did not put plastic in the recycling bin, instead they put it in the trash. The final reason is if you use plastic, put it in the recycling bin instead of the trash bin. In conclusion, plastic is bad for the environment. Next time you go to the beach, please pick up your trash so it does not go into the sea.
Hello, I am Juliette Flowers, and my topic is the American Revolutionary War. The American Revolutionary War started on April nineteenth, seventeen seventy-five. It lasted many years and ended September third, seventeen eighty-three. The war was in a couple of places such as Boston, the Thirteen Colonies, and Lexington and Concord. It all started when King George III put bad laws on the colonists and taxed them for goods like tea. British soldiers planned on stealing gunpowder, but the colonists found out and stopped them. They did this because King George III made a law that they couldn't go into anyone's home without permission. Paul Grevier rode with William Dawes to Lexington to warn the villagers that the British, that the British soldiers were coming. After Paul's ride was the first battle, the Battle of Lexington and Concord. George Washington was the commander of the colonists. The French aided the British, so they teamed up with the colonists more towards the end of the war. In the end, after many years of fighting and disagreements, the colonists, the colonists won the war.
Hi, I'm Evelyn Ratzmer, and I am reading Christmas is Very Important to Me. Sometimes people think Christmas is all about Santa and gummy toys, but I have found many different reasons why Christmas is important. Christmas is important because you get to hang out with family, you get to eat nice, sweet Christmas treats, and then you also get to set up Christmas decorations. One reason Christmas is important is because you get to hang out with family. First of all, you can make Christmas cookies with your family. Every year, my family makes cookies with my grandma. We would make gingerbread man. We would also make peanut butter cookies with a hushy kiss on top. And last but not least, we would make sugar cookies and decorate them. Second of all, you can go to Christmas parties. Like one time, I was at a Christmas party with my family when I was younger. It was at my grandparents' house. It was so fun. Third of all, you can watch Christmas movies with your family. You can watch Christmas movies or non-Christmas movies. For example, you can watch The Grinch. Second reason Christmas is important is because you get to eat sweet Christmas treats. First of all, you get to eat nice, sweet candy candies. They are sweet and minty at the same time. It cheers you into the Christmas spirit. Second of all, is that you get to drink hot chocolate when you are just out sledding or even building a snowman. Come inside when you feel cold and drink some. It will heat you up. Third of all, you get to eat sweet treats, you get sweet treats from Saint Nick each year if you are good. Sometimes even your elf comes on the day or comes day before or after he comes. My last reason is that you get to set up Christmas decorations. First of all, in November or December, you get to set up Christmas decorations inside and out. For example, Christmas trees, ornaments, and so on. Second of all, you can put up decorations outside too. For example, lights, snowballs, loaves, and so on. It might as well bring cheer to the people who drive by. Third of all, you can decorate the tree as a family. It is better than doing it alone, so when people see it, they will have joy all around them. Other people should care about this because Christmas is not all about Santa and toys. It is even more than you think.
Hello, my name is Aubrey Omen, and I will be reading my memoir titled Pleasure. When I turned eleven, I thought that I would be this mature young woman that younger kids would look up to and be inspired by. I was so excited to turn eleven and finally grow up, but turns out I was wrong. I'm just as immature as I always have been. I'm still scared of the dark, sometimes laugh at serious things. I still sleep with stuffed animals and so much more childish things that I wish I don't do. At first, I thought I had to change. I thought that people would begin to get annoyed with me and not like me anymore. Thinking about this made me sad and upset, so most nights I would cry to myself and think, I'm such a horrible person. Sometimes I would compare myself to my friends and think all sorts of things, like they're so much more mature than me, or I wish I could be as good as them. But one day, on a school day at recess, one of my friends came up to me and asked if I would play with her, so I said yes. The entire team were together, and we had so much fun that I completely forgot about being mature. When it was time to line up to go inside, we said goodbye to each other, and I was about to leave when she gave me a huge hug and said, you're such a great friend, Aubrey. My heart burst like a volcano erupting. I felt so happy and relieved at the same time. I smiled and said, you too. After that experience, I learned that I don't have to change myself to be happy. Who cares if I cry about something that isn't even that sad? Who cares if I'm still afraid in the dark? Not me, that's for sure. So whenever someone asks me, why do you have to be so immature all the time? I say, because that's me, and I'm perfect just the way I am.
Hi, I'm Carson. I'm going to be reading my memoir called Too Much of a Good Thing. Being a normal ten-year-old, I liked Doritos, but sometimes I'm a three-year-old that just got introduced to them, and I eat a whole-party-sized bag. Crunch, crunch, crunch. There I sat on the couch eating obnoxious amounts of Doritos, unaware of my pig-like behavior. It was like a genie turned me into a goat for an hour just to eat a big bag of Doritos. It was delicious to be a goat for a little bit until after an hour of eating, it makes you feel like you have a bomb in your stomach that explodes over and over again. Even though I didn't feel good, I made the bad decision to keep eating, and it made me feel even worse. After I finished eating the bag, I felt terrible, and I did not want to do anything for the rest of the night. When I was laying down on the couch, all I was thinking about was why I ate so many Doritos. Another example is when I was riding my four-wheeler for a very long time, but maybe for too long. Vroom, vroom. I was sitting on my four-wheeler, driving around my yard, not thinking about anything but me riding it. I was like the wind, whirling and whirling, not stopping and going very fast. I kept riding around my yard, not realizing that I had been riding my four-wheeler for an hour, but I didn't care because I was as happy as a puppy getting his belly rubbed. After another thirty minutes of riding, I felt my stomach turn upside down. I slowed down my four-wheeler until it was at a complete stop. I got off my four-wheeler and walked over to my patio to sit down. I took a seat, tore my helmet off, and let out a big sigh. I kept looking back and forth between my four-wheeler and the garbage can. Luckily, I didn't have to choose either of them and went inside. Making those bad decisions made me realize that you should do everything in moderation and that there can be too much of a good thing.
So, there you go. Thank you so much. As you can tell, that our writing program is really paying off. Our teachers and our students are completely invested in the work. We have adjusted our schedules to allow for the time needed for this quality of work to happen. The teachers teach what's called a mini lesson, which is usually, the goal is ten to fifteen minutes of the lesson, and then the students generally have about thirty to forty minutes of just writing time. And then during that writing time, the teachers are doing what we call conferring, where they're checking on students one-on-one, or they're pulling in some small groups to help enhance their writing, and this is the product of it. So thank you for your commitment to it as well.
Yeah, when I was here, the age of these kids, I would have never had the courage to come and stand in front of a group like this, so great job, kids, and excellent writing. Any other comments or questions from the board?
I can relate to the Doritos thing.
My wife thinks I'm two, so it's okay, don't grow up. You know, it's okay not to be mature. But seriously, I think the writing program is wonderful. You kids did a great job, and as a board member, this is one of the coolest things that we get to experience, is presentations from our students. So you all did a wonderful job, so thank you.
All right. Thank you. Moving on. Item four, Citizen Comments. Community residents and members of the Germantown School District are invited to share their questions, comments, or concerns with the school board. Speakers should keep their comments to three minutes or less. We have three people signed up tonight. First one, Karen Wunschel.
Yes, I like following that group. They're tight for me.
Sometimes, though, it's a hard act to follow.
I think it is a hard act to follow. Very good. So my name is Karen Wunschel. I'm a physical education teacher at Kennedy Middle School. I am the GEA representative for the board meeting tonight. Just wanted to let you all know that in the fall, the GEA held a food drive to benefit our local families. Feeding off that excitement of that event, the GEA organized various random act of kindness events throughout the month of February to show our continued support and love of our community and surrounding areas. A different random act of kindness event was held at each of the buildings throughout the district. We do look forward to sharing our successes from these events at the next school board meeting. That was our big GEA to-do this past month, or this month, I should say. If anyone has any questions, feel free to ask. If I can answer them, great. If not, I'll pass them on to the leadership of the GEA.
I think that's great. I look forward to hearing all the great things that you're doing.
Yeah, I know, I can speak for Kennedy because I, myself, and a colleague of mine were in charge of that, and today we, the past two weeks, we collected donations for the Ronald McDonald House, and today we put everything together, took some pictures, and tomorrow we're gonna deliver it to the Ronald McDonald House, so we're looking forward to finally meeting the person that we've been in contact with at the Ronald McDonald House. And I know the other buildings in the district have done some awesome things too, so.
Excellent.
Next month, you'll hear all about those.
All right. Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Next up, Joshua Johnson.
Good evening.
Good evening. I gotta say that it's good to know that there's somebody else who can eat a whole-party-sized Doritos. And I feel bad about it, I'm just saying.
Well, not feel bad until after.
I know, right? Like you said, laying on the couch. Good afternoon, thank you for this opportunity to speak in front of you. I'm coming to you about deliberation and the conversation that will happen tonight about policy twenty-four fourteen with human growth and development. I've been contacted by numerous parents in the district to just make a comment to, to the board as you're deliberating and having the conversation tonight when the policy comes up for approval or discussion, to think about and make sure that we're being really mindful of the policies that we're passing, especially when they have an opportunity to have negative implications on the LGBTQ plus staff as well as the students, the scholars, to be very mindful of that, to think about what the implications could be from that. Also, thinking about it as the board's responsibility to show the evidence-based standards that prove the policies that are written or that prove the language that is used in the policies that are written, to make sure that we're showing, we're covering all bases, we're doing our due diligence. You all, as the board, are doing your due diligence to show the argument for or against whatever the conversation is about, that we're showing both sides of it so that we can be, you all can make an informed decision, but then also so the community has the ability as well to understand what that decision was, and true transparency, which I know the board is continuing to strive to work towards. Also, to think about, what are the conversations that come up after that? This policy passes and subsequent policies, does it now get down to a point where we're telling, we're not allowing teachers to do the things that they do on a daily basis such as telling a little boy or a little girl which bathroom they can use? So while we may not be thinking that far ahead, or while we may be thinking that far ahead, I would, you know, lay it at the board on behalf of myself, as well as a concerned parent, as well as the parents in the district who voice their concern, to be very careful or to be, to be really intentional and in a way of making sure that everything is taken into account when you're creating these policies. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ellen Goldtree.
I'm the last one.
All right. Move on to item five, Minutes. I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three Board of Education meeting minutes.
Second.
All right. Motion by Ewert, second by Sotterberg. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? That carries. All right. Item six, Building Committee. Mr. Pollak.
You. So the Building-
that we're showing both sides of it so that we can be, you all can make an informed decision, but then also so the community has the ability as well to understand what that decision was, and true transparency, which I know the board is continuing to strive to work towards. Also, to think about, what are the conversations that come up after that? This policy passes and subsequent policies. Does it now get down to a point where we're telling, we're not allowing teachers to do the things that they do on a daily basis, such as telling a little boy or a little girl which bathroom they can use? So while we may not be thinking that far ahead, or while we may be thinking that far ahead, I would, you know, lay it at the board on behalf of myself, as well as a concerned parent, as well as the parents in the district who voice their concern, to be very careful or to be really intentional and in a way of making sure that everything is taken into account when you're creating these policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen Goldtree. All right. Move on to item five, minutes. I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three Board of Education meeting minutes.
Second.
All right, motion by Ebert, second by Sotterberg. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. All right, item six, building committee. Mr. Pollak.
So, the building committee did meet on February thirteenth. During that meeting, there were a number of different updates regard, from Mr. Lord regarding the work orders being processed. You know, striving towards being able to not only document but close those out as quickly as possible. The, also, there was an update regarding the walkthrough list, all of the different work that's been going on within the buildings. Items being closed out, probably new items being added and reprioritized as they come through. Specifically, we also got a couple of updates that, regarding the flood at Rockfield and the pressure tank issues over at Amy Bell. Basically, that the, at that time, and I'm sure it's been updated or closed out or continued to be worked on, excuse me, the Rockfield flood had been taken care of, all the problems were, have been addressed or in process. And some of the insurance things were still, I think, outstanding, if I remember correctly. They, I'll let you give an update here in a minute, just if there's anything else to add. And the Amy Bell pressure tank, kudos to everybody, including staff, parents, maintenance, and those folks who helped correct the situation. We tried to at least put a temporary patch on things, if you will, to be able to stay open. But unfortunately, we couldn't. And so the last-minute shift and everybody running around to pick up kids and all that kind of stuff. So kudos to everybody for responding as well as we could in a situation like that. We also received a, an update on GSF. Things are still kind of a work in progress. I think I mentioned it at the meeting, but I'll mention it again. Teachers, staff, you know, keep updating the Google form. If you're seeing any issues, we want to keep track of those. And we want to be able to address them and escalate them if needed in a timely fashion. I'll pause. Mr. Lord, any updates or any corrections regarding anything in this part?
No, that's good. I think the only thing I really have to do is insurance. Seems as far as Rockfield goes, as we've made some, some headway in receiving a check from the insurance company for kind of that first three-quarter bit of what we went through. And we just about, I just about stamped a scheduled date for floor replacement in room one oh four.
And then just one other thing there. I know I forwarded some information regarding the building tours to Mr. Lord and trying to, so for those who may not have attended the building committee meeting, I had a takeaway to reach out to the different PTAs to see if we could partner on the same nights that they have their meetings so that we could host it either prior or after. And so, and to structure it in such a way so we wouldn't necessarily interfere. That way, you know, for anybody who's going to be attending the PTA, they could actually come a little early, see the building, see some of the areas that maybe they don't normally see. And also, anybody in the community, especially those people who live or are part of that school, they can come in and maybe even learn a little bit about the PTA and what they're doing. So I know a few of them have responded positively, which is nice. And I forwarded those off. I'm still waiting for a couple of responses. And I did make clear in the email to them that if they weren't comfortable with that or if they would prefer that we do that another night, we obviously would schedule it on another evening. All right, that's the update. But I do have another topic, that being the U.S. Bank Mud Splash Run for Funds. So we received a request from the Germantown Community Scholarship. So they're, they would like to continue their Mud Splash Run for Funds, which is a fundraiser for them that once again awards teacher grants and also grants or scholarships for our students. It had been taking place for four consecutive years, leading up to twenty-twenty at the high school, but it has been canceled the last couple of years due to the pandemic. So they would like to kick things off again. And I do want to make a couple of points that were brought up at the building committee, but also just as a friendly reminder for those who did not attend or has not watched that meeting, is that during this, David J. Frank digs the course and it comes back the next day to repair and rebuild the areas. Fire department fills the course with water. It's historically on or around Father's Day weekend. And that way, it does allow all the repairs and rebuilds to take place prior to fall sports, so there's no interference with that. The only ask is that GSD staff is to provide garbage cans. And typically, the football and soccer teams assist with the setup and cleanup. So with that, there's a motion, I'd like to make a motion with a positive recommendation from the building committee for support and approval of the U.S. Bank Mud Splash Run for Funds at Germantown High School on June seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you. This comes forward with a positive recommendation and does not require a second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, the map that's in the agenda is not correct. It does not include the PAC where we are sitting this evening or the parking lot to our northwest here. So it would be nice to get the map cleaned up. You know, the map is showing an area that doesn't really exist anymore.
All right, yeah, they may need to modify their route just a little.
Yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know on that.
Okay, thank you.
I don't recall what we did previous years, if we had like a memorandum of understanding created with the Germantown Community Scholarship Foundation. We should have one laying out the rules of engagement to also include mandating that they have a certificate of insurance on file, that they, if something happens, they'll indemnify the school district so that they don't come after us, they're gonna come after the foundation.
So when, when a program or a company rents one of our facilities, which is also land, they have to follow and they fill out a form in which states that, in our board policy, that they have to have a certain coverage of health insurance. So they are following that exact item as well as in the buildings and on land. If there's any damage to our property, in the board policy, it says that they're responsible for it.
Thank you.
I brought that up.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries.
And that is it from the building committee.
Thank you. Item seven, finance committee. Mr. Low.
Yes, good evening. The finance committee met on February thirteenth. It was a very long meeting. It was videoed and the video is on our district website. So what you'll get this evening is what I call the Cliff's Notes version. First thing we did was we approved January and February vouchers. Next item we discussed was other post-employment benefits, OPEB. And this had mainly to do with health insurance for retired teachers. No action was taken. There was a financial update. And Brittany brought forward a couple of different things, just a discussion, really no action was taking, taken. We had approved a line of credit not to exceed six point five million dollars. It turns out Brittany and team only needed to withdraw two million dollars of that. So that shows that she's controlling the budget. And we paid twenty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars in interest, so not too bad on that. Next item, we will take to the full board. It's the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget adjustments. We didn't have it as an action item on the thirteenth, so we'll cover it later in the full board meeting. Next thing was an ESER update. Under, Frank Lord gave us a presentation for under mitigation to install air conditioning at all schools, but really, it's going to end up being KMS. Todd Lamb discussed mental health. Justin Baumgartner discussed safety and cameras. And Jake Mizziak went through a learning loss program that he's working on. Next item was Brittany's variance report. Did you want to talk about it or just move on? We covered it pretty well, I thought, in finance. Yeah, okay, we're good on that. Next item is a camera purchase. So under the full board item, it's seven B. And we bring forward to the Board of Education with a positive recommendation to move forward with camera and intercom purchase and installation for an amount not to exceed forty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
That comes forward with a positive recommendation and does not require a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Thank you.
Okay, next item is the full board item, seven C. And it's the Amy Bell boiler replacement. Tracy Pollak has already discussed it a little bit. One thing that we discussed in finance, believe it or not, is what about the other boiler? There are two boilers installed at Amy Bell. They were both installed at the same time. And it turns out Frank Lord gave us a report that one of the boilers was used a lot more than the other boiler. So actually, we're in pretty good shape replacing just the one that is bad right now. And the other one is the one we're using. It's holding up, but it's got a lot less hours on it, so we should be okay. So we, the motion is, motion to move forward with a positive recommendation to the full board to approve the replacement of the boiler at Amy Bell Elementary using Butter's Fettin Corporation in the amount not to exceed forty-four thousand dollars to be funded out of the capital improvements budget.
That comes forward with a positive recommendation and does not require a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries.
Okay, and the last item we discussed was library Chromebook purchase. Full board item, seven D for this evening. We bring forward to the Board of Education with a positive recommendation to move forward with Chromebook and license purchase for the amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand dollars.
All right, this also comes forward with a positive recommendation and does not require a second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I know the board, in previous years, we made a significant purchase of Chromebooks for all of our kiddos. These hundred and twenty-five are just, as you'll wear and tear, breakage, backfill, things that are broken. Where they, how are they gonna be used? Or where?
Justin?
Hello.
Good evening.
Yeah, no, these are different Chromebooks and a model that Germantown has purchased in the past. These are touchscreen Chromebooks. The use of the touchpad on the Chromebook and the keyboard isn't particularly conducive to particularly our younger grade levels, you know, K through two. So they have some amount of iPads, about five to ten per classroom at that level. But we don't have anything that does the, a full class of engagement for the K through two students in particular. The touchscreen also would allow three, four, and five, grades three, four, and five, to have access to other different kinds of applications and things that they use, as you can imagine. Like art, for example, on a touchscreen is gonna be a lot more effective than trying to manipulate a mouse and move it around to do the drawing. This is a new purchase designed to expand the technical capabilities of the Chromebooks at the elementary schools.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
And that's it for finance.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item eight, teaching and learning committee. Mr. Ebert.
Teaching and learning committee met January thirteenth and we received quite a few updates in regards to curriculum review. I'll just run through a couple of those. K through eight, reading review team has identified priorities for new curriculum and prioritized ELA standards. Curriculum, curriculums have been evaluated and they have focused on the Super Kids curriculum, which will be reviewed by the full reading team. This is a phonics-based or primarily phonics-based program. We could possibly see a recommendation coming forward in March for a pilot for K through two. The packet for the committee meeting contains a draft of the priority standards for K through two reading program. If you have a chance, I'd recommend giving that a look. It kind of outlines some of the process that goes through, leading up to identifying a curriculum such as this and moving forward with the next steps. Moving on, sixth through eighth math review team is, it started earlier and is farther down the line. Team has piloted an illustrious math. We've all been provided access to that platform. We could view it as a parent, a student, and/or an educator. I believe there's a link in one of our previous meetings and I can get it if anyone would like to see it or has any more questions on it. The review team has completed their evaluation and will probably look to recommend this for adoption in the twenty-three, for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We have, and then our most recent start is world languages. Their team has started to prioritize standards. They are looking at two sets of standards, World Readiness Standards of Language and Learning and the Wisconsin Standards for Language, or World Language. Both are closely aligned. I believe one is built off of, or closely to, the other. They're working through which one they would like to bring forward. So we should see that coming through. New addition to the committee was pupil services. It's kind of a, a report from Director Lamb regarding the district's audit from DPI regarding our ERP development and compliance. This occurs every five years. As a result of the audit, the special education staff used their February seventeenth, I believe, in-service day to focus on approved grade level standards. He provided an update regarding the suicide prevention program we provide. It's called SOS Signs of Suicide. We've been using that since two thousand and seven. This program is, not the program, but education in suicide profession prevention is mandated by the state. So he wanted to bring this forward just as a topic in regards to the committee conversation. We were provided with a letter that goes home to the parents, as well as a letter provided to the students in regards to this. This is an opt-out program, which that letter to the parents outlines. During our discussion, it was noted that they've been, used the, used a math block of education to present this program. And there was discussion of possibly, from the committee, to potentially move it to a non-core class. So we're not working against our lost learning issues in mathematics or some of our other core studies. We also had a summer school offerings update. It looks like it'll be consistent with last year. Prior to that decision, teachers and staff were provided an opportunity for input and suggestions and no proposals were offered. I believe we'll see this later on in new business for the full board. And lastly, we discussed policies governing the operation of the Germantown School Libraries. We had a lengthy discussion in regards to some specifics and found some concerning areas that possibly needed further conversation by the policy committee. So we recommended it went there and that'll be,
Next.
I believe, an update next. So that's all I have.
All right.
Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from the board? All right, thank you. Move on to item nine, policy committee. Policy committee met on February twenty-first and discussed policies twenty-four fourteen, twenty-five twenty-two, and eighty-five ten. In policy twenty-four fourteen, which is our human growth and development policy, the committee is recommending adding language to make the policy compliant with Wisconsin statute one eighteen point zero one, two D, two C. And to also state that classroom instruction on sexual orientation or gender identity may not occur in grades K four through the grade five. In policy twenty-five twenty-two, which is the library and media centers policy, the committee is recommending modifications. committee is recommending modifications that clarify who can formally request reconsideration of specific library material. It expands that group to include parents of children attending school in the district, district residents, district employees, and Germantown School Board members. In addition, the paragraph requiring a searchable catalog of all materials being relocated to the parental access section of that policy. And Policy eighty-five, ten, which is our Wellness Policy, the committee is recommending changes that brings the policy in compliance with federal law. All right, with that background, the committee brings forward with a positive recommendation to approve the updates and modifications to District Policies zero-one, zero-zero through ninety-eight, zero-zero, as reviewed and revised, specifically Policy twenty-four, fourteen, Human Growth and Development, Policy twenty-five, twenty-two, Library and Media Centers Policy, and Policy eighty-five, ten, Wellness. Coming from committee, it does not require a second. Is there any discussion?
I have a couple items. So, twenty-four, fourteen. The first green paragraph, which directs, or mentions directing the students in grades nine through twelve, that's the piece that we've added due to the state statute, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Specifically with the classroom instruction by school personnel or third parties on sexual orientation or gender identity may not occur in K four through grade five. In effect, this is a reinforce, and correct me if my understanding is incorrect. This is, in effect, a reinforcement of our current curriculum, that being more focused on health, not human growth and development. And nothing in that specific language would prevent a teacher, if a third-grade student asked a question, to address it in an age-appropriate manner, if it could possibly conflict with the earlier language.
Correct. The language brought forward to the Policy Committee says that we would not teach a curriculum or teach gender-specific, or sexual orientation or gender identity unless it was approved curriculum and standard alignment brought forward to the board and approved.
Great, any other discussion?
At the committee meeting, we had some robust discussion, and I support this. I support, you know, we're, I support more parental rights. If parents want to have this instruction or talk about this, they can. I think it's great. I support, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I will.
Ebert?
Twenty-five, twenty-two, Library and Media Centers. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things there. So the real change initially, parents, children attending the school in the district and district residents was always a part of this from the twenty, September twenty-sixth edition of this process. We decided to add a district employees and Germantown School Board members section to this to give them direction as to how they should proceed if they were to have concerns, because prior it didn't give a path for that. I would note that the, for the board members, it is more restrictive than it is for the community members and employees and staff in that it mandates that they start at Section B, which is the written request to the district administrator, versus the informal request going to the principal or the library media specialist. And that's due to kind of protect the integrity of the process and not put undue pressures on either of those personnel.
All right, thank you for that clarification.
We even discussed proper vetting of the four hundred-plus books per year that we purchase year over year. And there is some commentary about getting electronic copies of the books and putting keyword searches for each book in there to see if anything is flagged, so that we could do more of a deep dive on the textbooks that we bring into our school district, so.
And I, to clarify, those are four hundred books just at the high school level. There's more on average across our six schools in a normal year or so. Mr. Mizziak and our two full-time school librarians will be working on a process, and then we'll report back later this year through teaching and learning.
All right, thank you. There's no other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item ten, New Business. Discussion in action to approve the twenty-twenty-three Summer School Course offerings. Dr. Reiter?
Yep, I'll be taking this one on Mr. Mizziak's behalf this evening, provided for you. I believe we'll have it live tomorrow, no, Wednesday, our course offering book for Summer School Programming. There are new, no new courses, but we wanted to bring forward tonight the courses that have been historically provided. Obviously, these courses will run based on student enrollment and getting teachers aligned to teach said courses. So, we're asking for a motion to approve the Summer School Courses and tentative budget as, for twenty-twenty-three as presented.
All right, entertain a motion.
We'll make a motion to approve the Summer School Courses and tentative budget for the twenty-twenty-three as, for twenty-twenty-three as presented.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Ebert, second by Sotterberg. Any discussion?
I have a question. Swimming seems to be the hot-ticket item always, where people are fighting to get online as soon as the doors open.
Fighting to get in the pool, yeah.
Yeah. Can we have a takeaway to see if we can, if by chance they fill up and there's a lengthy waiting list? If we could try to open more segments of that with our partners?
Yeah, I think we have an agreement, right, Ms. Alndorf, when it comes with Rockets Aquatics and how that works?
I don't know if I'm on right now.
You are.
Okay, great. So in past years, we did have swimming, and our staff did the, did the swimming program. We found it where not many people signed up for it. And then when they did sign up for it, a lot of people didn't show up at the last, and that happens with all the courses, because there's no fee attached to them. So, some people think it's a great idea when, when you sign up for them, and then other things happen by the time summer comes along. So we do have a, an agreement with Rockets that they are going to support the, the amount of students that sign up for, so they should be able to cover it. If we do go over the amount of time that they have allocated in their budget, we can try to staff it, but we'd have to have a life guard there as well.
Which, like all other employment groups, lifeguards are of a high shortage, like officials.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. All right, item B, Discussion in Action to Approve Early College Credit Program and Start College Now Applications. Dr. Reiter?
Thank you. So in accordance with state statute, when it comes to Start College Now, as well as the Early College Credit Program, this is something that we come to you twice a year with, approval of students who have either exhausted our academic offerings and are looking through the Early College Credit Program to take courses that we do not offer here at GHS, as well as the Start College Now, where it comes to technical college courses that are above and beyond our offerings here as well. These are both state programs that have been around for almost, it seems like a decade now. They've been rebranded a few times. So as you can see, Mr. Mizziak has outlined the number of, we have had sixteen students submit for the Wisconsin Technical College for CNA coursework, three additional submitted for applications to write studies including biology, network security, and landscape design. The application for deadline was March first, so that application is still open. We may come back to you with additional applicants next month to be approved as well. So tonight, we're looking for a motion to approve the Early College Credit Program and Start College Now requests as presented.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the Early College Program and the Start College Now request as presented.
Second.
All right, motion by Sotterberg, second by Pollak. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item C, Discussion in Action to Approve the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three Budget Adjustments. Alndorf?
Sure. This was brought to the Finance Committee earlier this month, but did not have a motion, so it is being brought to the full board under New Business. In February of every year, we do bring any budget adjustments that have happened from the time the board approved the budget in October up until January. That's, January is when we usually get our final amounts for our rollover for any of our grants. We get our final amounts for our Common School Library Aid, which we received more money, so that's how we were allowed or able to purchase the Chromebooks that you approved previously through our library aid. So those will be housed in the library. We also updated our four K allocation for our four K startup grant. We were not given the actual amount until January. It is based on enrollment, so they had to wait until our enrollment numbers went to the state. And then other areas that we adjusted within our budget that don't have to come to the board, but if you adjust within the budget and account numbers, that doesn't need to be approved by the board, but that's also in here as well. And then during the Finance Committee, you did not have the, the attachment in which it shows what was approved at the annual meeting versus what the budget is today.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion, or if you have any questions.
Is it still a positive motion? I guess not. Okay. I'd like to bring forward to the Board of Education the recommendation to approve the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget adjustments. I'll second.
All right, motion by Loeth and second by Ebert. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item D, Discussion in Action to Approve the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three Intergovernmental Agreement with the Village of Germantown.
Sure, in front of you today is the draft agreement that is coming for full board approval. We did bring this in November to the Finance Committee and then the board, and it was tabled. For more information, we did do an, an analysis on cost versus revenue of our previous rentals from the Village of Germantown. So in front of you, the changes that occurred from the last contract that was approved by the board were that we changed, well, we didn't change, we corrected the process that we went through where the village has to submit their usage to us. We weren't following the contract in previous years, so we just wanted to make sure that the current contract states what the process is that we are doing, which means that they are third, second in line on the ability to have our space, to be able to rent our space. Obviously, the schools, the students in the district and the sports get first right for our spaces, and then the Village of Germantown gets the next availability. One of the other sections that was in here, again, a process that has always been, but not in the contract, so I wanted to add it, states that if, for some reason, the village would contract with a third party, so if they were having a Lego company come in under them, but they are contracting with them, they are at a different rate. So we've always charged them at a different rate, so that hasn't changed. But I just wanted in the contract stating that that's what, what we do. And then finally, under fee waivers, you may remember in the past, there was a section under there that talked about our tennis courts, because they were funded by a grant years ago. We finally did find the, the grant information from, I believe, nineteen-seventy-seven, stating that we had to have no charge for our tennis courts, and the grant was twenty thousand dollars at that time. So the amount that they have used it over that period of time, we believe, has sufficed the twenty thousand dollar grant. So that was removed at this time, and moving forward, if they have rentals, they would be charged for the tennis court at the rate on the fee schedule. Those are the only items that were changed from the last contract. So I can answer any other questions.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, Brittany, thank you for doing this, and thank you for bringing this back, and I can't see you because you're behind a speaker, but that's okay. Question on priority to users, which the, the village will be paying off of. Have we adjusted priority to users to keep up with inflation? Because what we want to make sure is that all of our users of the district facilities, which we want people to use our facilities, are paying their fair share. And with inflation the way it is, with inflation the way that it's going to be in the near and long term, based on the policies of the administration, I don't see any light at the end of the tunnel. So we're going to have year-over-year high inflation. That means a lot of additional unbudgeted expense for the district. So did, have we adjusted the fees associated with priority to users?
We have not adjusted the fees for any of our fee schedule. The board did approve last May for the fee schedule for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, so starting July first. We are planning on doing an, an analysis of surrounding districts, what their fees are for rentals, as well as looking into what our expenses have been. And then our plan was to bring that to the board for approval. Usually, we would come in May. It can be done at any point in time. I do know that, just for example, the village gives out their guide, their guide for their programs, so we'd want to give them time to make sure that what we are charging, if it's going to affect them, that they have time to adjust their fees if they need to do that. So we will be doing an analysis and bringing it to the board for approval to adjust the fee schedule appropriately.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that all users pay their fair share based on inflation. And I'm not saying that we have to charge the village an eighty-eight percent increase because of water and sewage that they are charging us, or a twelve percent tax increase that the village pass along to all the constituents within the village for new public works building. I'm not saying we need to do that. But I am saying that if they're increasing their fees for, I believe, a, a local club football team by, I forgot, double-digit, you know, we should be looking at that in our benchmarking with not only our peer districts, but what other municipalities are doing to make sure that they recoup, recoup their costs. And right now, we're not recouping anything.
Correct.
Because we need those dollars to fund other things that hopefully the board will consider, like the School Security Aid. I mean, we've got low-hanging fruit, and right now, we're not going after the low-hanging fruit, so.
I agree.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, for the fee schedule, the current one runs through this coming July, correct?
Well, correct.
What's in place?
Correct. Normally, I mean, if the board doesn't have to change the fee schedule, it is just brought for approval every year. And yes, normally, it would be for the school year, so the June through, excuse me, July through June. But it can be changed at any point in time. Or if, for some reason, the board chooses not to change it, it would just, can stay consistent.
Okay. When do we usually do that?
That's usually approved in May for July one, but it can come any time.
And I know their catalogs go out a season ahead of time, so I would think that summer program is already printed.
I believe you're right.
And delivered. And the reason why I bring this up is I sit on the Commission for Parks and Rec as a member of the, of the district board, school board. So when we look into changing fees, I don't know if there's a more appropriate time to do that based off of what they're publishing, or is it we should set them beforehand in or in coordination with them?
Right, and I know they, they set, they have their programs come out based on two seasons, so I don't know if there'd be a right time, because our schedule does, you know, all, all locations, inside and outside, so I don't know.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to split it up by season, right?
Right.
To that point, you know, I really, you know, if we decide as a board that we don't want to be taken advantage of anymore, and we don't want to lose money because of inflation, and we want people to pay their fair share, I think we should be looking at the priority two fees yesterday. We should be looking at that, because we're in a unique situation, not only in the village, but also in the state and the country, with high, high inflation. It's not going away, and we're losing money because of that. So I would suggest that we revisit this immediately to stop the bleeding, and then maybe look at it on a, not saying a month-over-month, but maybe a quarterly basis. And if we adjust the fees and it impacts their programming, well, it's just going to be a pass-through expense. The village has a very, very healthy fund balance that they could draw on, similar to what we did with infrastructure improvements within the school district. We did that, but they're not touching their money. And they're, we're being taken advantage of, so.
I can, I can bring it in March, if the board would like me to move it forward.
I would like to have you do that. Just have a discussion so we can look at it. Just have a discussion so we can look at it, and based on your analysis in terms of this is the cost today, and with inflation, this is what it should be tomorrow, and with your benchmarking that you're going to do, so.
Okay.
Just want to point out, um, in the current document that we're discussing, it does say that the fee schedule is on the district's website and may be adjusted no more than frequently, no more frequently than annually by the Board. So if we had last adjusted it last May, if this is similar to the previous agreement, well, we're giving them this agreement anyways. If we approve it here, we could certainly approve it starting next month.
Would it behoove us to change that language? From annually to?
I I would say that if if our costs go up because of something outside of our control, and it's not just for the Village, it's also for the the Rocket Program for the pool, which I think we're giving away that program based on the true cost of the of 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 running that, the pool. We should have the opportunity or the right as a Board to increase our fees accordingly, and not wait a year.
That that's my concern.
Right.
Because if we have it, the language locked in is annually, it won't allow us to mar- adjust to the market.
Yeah, I would, I would argue that we should strike that. I mean, I know why it's in there, because you want to um, you know, have some type of forecasting, not only for the Village and also for the users, uh but also the community members that participate in programming, so.
Just give the notice within, you know, if we would approve a change today, they have, we'll give them a forty-five day, ninety day, whatever.
Realistically, what would be the process to understand what we would need to change the fees timeline-wise? What a quarterly scenario would be?
I would, Adam, I would support that, um certainly twice a year. Again, we're in unique times, um based on the policies of the current administration, which is causing inflation. If we did have the fl- inflation out there, we wouldn't even be having this conversation.
Just playing devil's advocate, changing it quarterly might be a little bit too much for the Village, because they have to create their catalog with their pricing in it. If we adjust after they print their catalog, it may not work out financially for them to even offer that program if our rate goes too high.
Yeah, I'm not going to say that we should be, you know, looking at our fee schedule on an as-dead basis, but maybe uh twice a year. Or maybe we put a little inflation writer in there, a little footnote saying, um, if inflation goes up above so-and-so, uh we have the right to revisit the fee schedule, something like that. I know that's going to delay this, um, but I don't think we should be bound by, you know, one time a year looking at the fee schedule, when something could come down the pike.
Right, no, I don't know if it's, I don't know necessarily if you have to delay this. You can have the motion with the adjustment in it. It's not going to be signed today.
Have we received any input from the Village or feedback from the Village on this?
No.
The the last correspondence we had with the Village was asking if we had an approved IGA. We had some, we were bringing it back.
I would say we just, on on, uh, section five, um, last sentence, the current fee schedule is available on the district's website, period. And may be adjusted no more frequently than annually by the Board. If we just strike that out, I'll just have her put a period after website.
Again, just playing devil's advocate, I'm not sure that it's fair to the Village for us to be able to change it at any time.
And others, and other programs.
And other program users.
How about, okay, biannually, how's that? Biannually. By the Board.
Just change annually to biannually?
Yeah, biannually.
It's, we do, we we need the flexibility, is the ultimate. We have to have some sort of flexibility.
Again, if the Village could increase our water and sewer on a on a vote of all the trustees by eighty-eight percent, just like that, without giving me a six-month's notice for my budget or for our budget in the school district, we should have every right to look at our fee schedule and adjust accordingly. So biannually, I would support.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion stating that? Because we do not have a motion on the floor for the agreement at this point.
Um, sure. I'll make a motion to, again, get up here, please. Motion to approve the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-four facility use agreement with the Village of Germantown with modifications to section five. Uh, where is it? On the last sentence, uh, the current fee schedule is available on the district's website and may be adjusted no more frequently than biannually by the Board.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Russ?
Yep.
We have a motion by Satterberg to approve the agreement, uh, and in section five, changing annually to biannually, with a second by Ewer. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Uh, item E, discussion in action to approve the purchase and installation of night lock doorstoppers. Brittany?
Sure, in front of you today is a quote, excuse me, for thirty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents um to purchase night lock doorstoppers for all the occupied doors or rooms in our um, all our facilities. Um, we have been talking about this. We did do a test on some other um devices on our buildings, and those were not something that the district wanted to move forward with. So those were then removed, and we are moving or asking to move forward with these um devices um to help with barricading our classrooms in case of an emergency.
Thank you. I I appreciate that you've done testing, and you've ruled out some products that didn't meet some of our needs, and that you've also settled on something that has the backing of law enforcement and our and our local fire departments.
Correct.
Um, I see that that action item is purchase and installation, but it looked like the quote was only for purchasing? Is the vendor going to install them, or is this something like our maintenance group is going to be doing?
Our our maintenance group is going to do it after, in fact, we realized that we could do it and have this done through the spring break season into the summer, and it would save additional costs.
Excellent, thank you.
Does, I'm sorry, does the motion say installation?
Well, the the agenda topic.
Oh, I apologize. I was going to say, I didn't believe I wrote the motion that way. Sorry.
All right, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the purchase of night lock doorstoppers from Taylor Brothers Doorlock LLC in the amount not to exceed thirty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars ninety-four cents.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion by Pollock, second by Satterberg. Any other discussion?
What?
Ewer?
What fund is this coming out of?
It will come out of Esther funds. Sorry. Yes?
Because the prior purchase stuff had that, which fund or balance was coming.
Oh, under sa- under the safety section.
Yep.
Sorry about that.
No, no worries, thank you.
Any other discussion? Michael?
We discussed this in the last month, and I couldn't find it in Building Committee or Finance. I thought it was in one of those two, and I thought the price was around fifteen thousand dollars. So I'm wondering what what happened. Do I just have the number wrong, or? Because now it's thirty-five thousand.
Correct, and I don't know, and so it would have been under the Esther section of Finance.
Okay.
Um, so you can look there, and initially, when we were going, and this may not be the correct number, but initially, when we were going with the another device, um, we estimated the amount in there. Um, and we are also focused on outswinging doors initially, and then um we switched devices and went with a different, um, oh, and then, excuse me, decided to do all the doors outswinging and inswinging.
Okay.
So that could be
Okay, that that's prob- that's probably it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Uh, item F, discussion in action to approve teacher retirements. Mr. Noah?
Thank you. Um, we have in front of you three names of teachers who requested retirement. Since the posting of this agenda and background, one of them has rescinded. Haiki Tim made the decision to, she wants to stay at least one more year. So we have two requests this evening. The first is Mary Laudy, a third-grade teacher from County Line Elementary School. She's requesting that the Board accept her decision to retire at the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Mary has worked at Ger- uh, in the Germantown School District for thirty-three years, with thirty-three years at County Line Elementary um as a third-grade teacher. And I thought it was kind of funny. She was, made it very, very clear to me that she wasn't in the same room all thirty-three years. Um, the second is Michelle Thompson, uh, fourth-grade teacher at Amy Bell Elementary, who's requesting that the Board accept her decision to retire at the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Uh, Michelle has taught at Amy Bell Elementary for the past fifteen years. Her teaching career also includes seven point five years of teaching at the elementary level in the Milwaukee Public School System. We ask that you approve both of these requests and wish them the best of luck in retirement.
All right, let's entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the request for retirement at the conclusion of the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year for um Mari Laudy and Michelle Thompson, and thank them for their combined fifty-five and a half years of service to our school district. So I think it's wonderful, um, thirty-three years at County Line. Um, it's pretty cool.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Satterberg, second by Pollock. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Uh, item G, discussion in action to approve DECA overnight travel request and expenses. Dr. Ritter?
Our DECA had, team has twenty-two students that have qualified for state competition. Um, they've actually left today, so we're hoping this gets approved um this evening. Um, uh, that we're looking for, uh, Mr. Martin is looking for approval for the transportation costs and the expenses for advisors that will come out of athletics and activities.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, this dramatic effect. Motion to approve the overnight travel request for twenty-two DECA students and three advisors to travel to Lake Geneva from February twenty-seventh through March first, twenty twenty-three, to attend the DECA state competition with transportation, and advisor costs paid through district funds, and we wish them the best of luck.
Do I have a second?
I'll I'll second.
All right, motion by Pollock, second by Satterberg. Any discussion?
Yes. Better late than never, but is this something that we could have had on the last board meeting?
No, we were made aware of this in between the last committee time. They that they were made aware of their qualification. So it was a quick turnaround. Mr. Martin um ran to talk with Mr. Farron and Mr. Nurdle, and I gave them the green light, knowing that we wouldn't have a board meeting. I didn't think calling a special board meeting would was there was a need.
Thank you.
Michael?
And for our viewers at home, uh, what what's the acronym DECA?
You know, I knew you were going to ask that question, so I have my notes here. Distributed Education Clubs of America. It's um really through marketing and um business application.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Ewer?
Um, one question regarding this, but really covering the next two as well. Uh, maybe some new Board of Education that could happen here. Uh, this particular one calls for three advisors for twenty-two students. The following is one advisor for twenty-five, and the third is two advisors for a hundred and twenty. Do we have an explanation for how that decision's made?
So my understanding with DECA is there's multiple facets of the twenty-two students participate in multiple sections. So the advisors work, it's not like one competition, so they might oversee multiple competitions for one or small groups of students. The other one, um, the HOSA one that's coming up, is about the entire group, so there's less advisors. And then um the third one that will be coming up, the band trip, there will be parent chaperones as well that will be invited, which would pay their own way. So everything has its own uniqueness.
Two two to a hundred and twenty scared me.
Yeah, the first time I read that too, I thought, same.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I would just say that, you know, for the cadence of school board meetings, the Board may want to consider going back to two school board meetings a month, so that something like this will not slip through the cracks and violate our own policy, so.
Noted. All right, so you know the discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Uh, item H, discussion in action to approve H O S A overnight travel request and expenses. Dr. Ritter?
Yep, so the HOSA, High School Health Occupation Students of America um is going to a state leadership conference at Chula Vista, and they're looking for the the approval of twenty-five students and one advisor and the costs associated with that that will be coming out of athletics and activities as well.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the overnight travel request for the twenty-five HOSA students and one advisor to travel to Wisconsin Dells from April two through four, two thousand twenty-three, to attend the state leadership conference with transportation advisor costs and partial lounge lodging expenses as presented paid through district funds.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Satterberg, second by Ewer. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Uh, item I, discussion in action to approve G H S band trip.
Yep, Mr. Bill, Bell is requesting um permission for overnight travel for the G H S band to go to Washington DC from March twenty-third to the twenty-seventh. Um, there will be, as Mr. Ewer pointed out, a hundred and twenty-two students, or a hundred and twenty students and two advisors. They will be asking for parent chaperones as well. Um, all funding for transportation, lodging, meals, and registration is part of their fundraising campaign. There's no cost on the district's, so they're looking for the approval for the overnight travel request.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve as presented the overnight travel request for the Germantown High School band students and advisors to travel to Washington DC from March twenty-third through the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Motion by Pollock, second by Satterberg. Any discussion?
Yes, uh, I think this is going to be a wonderful trip, wonderful experience for our students. I got a question, and if you don't have the answer tonight, I would like to have the, you know, follow-up.
Sure.
Um, participate in a band performance. Where where are they going to do that at? Because I think it's wonderful that they're going to do that. I I'm just curious.
Dive into that.
Okay, no, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Uh, item J, discussion in action to approve Porcupine Mountain overnight field trip request. Dr. Ritter?
We have a variety of trips going on.
We do.
So there's a little background on this. This this trip had historically, the past few years, come out of summer school. Um, when Mr. Mizziak and I did an audit of our summer school programming this fall and looking at reimbursement for courses, this course does not um provide reimbursement from the state level. So um we we spoke with the teachers and um decided that it best serves as a field trip activity. Given the timeframe of when this has has transpired, it's it's after the school year is concluded. And so next year, we'll be looking at a way to make this part of a school year experience um versus an af- a summer trip experience. So um even though the, we've reserved the spots, we wanted to honor the trip again this year that it's historically been done through Germantown High School with members of the Environmental Club, or Environmental Science, Biology, Geology, and Astronomy are teachers in those in the Science Department. So we're looking for um approval tonight for the over- overnight field trip that will take place June tenth through fourteenth of twenty twenty-three to the Porcupine Mountains, and the um funding will come from the Teaching and Learning Budget.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the overnight travel request for twelve students and four advisors to travel to Porcupine Mountain Wilderness State Park from June tenth through June fourteen, two thousand twenty-three as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion by Satterberg, second by Loth. Any discussion?
I had a question. So what was presented is all club funding portions? And you, what was your comment just now on who was paying for this?
Uh, part of it will, it's, it will be paid out of um for the cost for the trip, but then we're providing additional compensation to the teachers since it's outside of the school year. That will come from Teaching and Learning. I'm sorry, thank you for the clarification.
And then in transportation, it says, I I think it says, it's hard to read, because it's handwritten. It's, I think it's activities covering and then zero dollars.
I will have to get clarification and report back why there's zero dollars for transportation. I'm assuming activities means coming. I'm assuming activities means coming out of the activities account from Mr. Nerdle. But there's no dollar amount associated. Well, I, we may be using a district van for this, cause it's a smaller, probably two district vans, because it's a smaller number of students, it's not a school bus full. And you're driving into a camping facility, but I can get clarification for that.
Okay, I just, it was, I'm just seeing it at zero, um and then to your comments regarding uh possibly making it into the school year at some point. Um I've had the opportunities to kayak and canoe that area, and I know early spring isn't conducive, and early fall, winter comes fast up there.
Sure.
So.
We have to juggle the, if this will continue into the future, um and then the access for more students if possible.
Sure. Interesting trip.
Yep.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Uh item K, discussion in action to approve donations.
As every month, we have a generous community, um in support, and we have multiple donations this evening. Looking for approval from the board tonight for the following donations. Germantown Community Coalition, six hundred and thirty dollars to our BSCU and Mesa organization. MacArthur PTA ni- three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents towards second grade field trip. MacArthur PTA, two hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents towards a first-grade field trip. Amy Bell PTA, twenty-three thousand dollars, three hundred and seven, twenty-three thousand three hundred and seventy-eight dollars towards six smart boards at Amy Bell. And then VFW Post ninety-two oh two, three hundred dollar donation to our GHS art department.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to thank the donors for their generosity and prove the donations as listed.
So good. All right, motion by Ewert, second by Pollock. Any discussion?
Yeah, um I just wanna highlight Amy Bell PTA for going above and beyond the call of duty. Twenty-three thousand dollars um is unbelievable. And I know um in the twelve years I've been on the board, I think they've funded the uh, the, the playground equipment um in double digits as, as well. So our PTAs are wonderful across all of our schools. I just, you know, twenty-three thousand dollars, that's, that's fantastic, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Uh item eleven, closed session. The board will go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen-point-eight-five-one C for performance and consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right, motion by Pollock, second by Ewert. And I will do roll call. Barney, yes, Satterberg?
Yes.
Loth?
Yes.
Ewert?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
All right, we are in closed session at eight-thirty-three. Thank you, everybody, and drive home safe.